Five o'clock, we appear to have a quorum, so I will call this meeting of the Transportation Policy and Planning Board to order. Riva, if you would please call the roll.
Bedrenath LaKella.
Here.
Balthazar Deanna Satena.
Here.
Barbara Harrington McKinney.
Present.
Carolyn McAndrews.
Here.
Christopher McAhill.
Here.
Grant Foster.
Here.
Keith Furman.
Present.
Margaret Bergamini.
Present.
Randy Waddell.
Present.
And Tom Wilson.
Here.
All right, we do have a quorum. Joe, if you would please proceed with our standard virtual meeting opening statement.
Welcome to our virtual meeting. If you lose connection at any point during the meeting, you can reconnect by clicking the link or calling the number in your original email. Members, if you are able, please activate your video and keep it on for the duration of the meeting. Staff, if you're able, please activate your video when you are speaking. All panelists have the ability to mute and unmute themselves. Please continue to use the raise hand feature when you'd like to be recognized to speak, ask questions, or request a roll call vote. Lowering your hand will take you out of the queue. Members of the public who have registered to speak, the name you entered in Zoom must match the name you entered in registration. You will remain muted until called upon. City staff will tell you when your time is up. After speaking, a member of the body may ask you a question. If you need to share documentation with the body, please send it to the email list on today's agenda. Chair, the floor is yours.
The duration and, oh, sorry, forgot to mute myself. Okay. So we are all here. We have one vacancy. So our first alternate, Margaret Bergamini, you'll be in voting status for the duration of the meeting. And if any other board members do leave, then Padraig, you'll be in voting status at that time. Do we have any? Let's see, next item, approval of minutes from our October 18th, 2021 meeting. Is there a motion? Alder Harrington McKinney.
I was waiting for the refusal. I need to notify the chair. I'll wait until that time comes.
Okay, yeah, we'll do that right after approval of minutes. Is there a motion to approve minutes from our October 18th, 2021 meeting?
So moved.
Thank you, Margaret. Is there a second? Chris, thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving our minutes from the October 18th, 2021 meeting, please unmute yourselves and say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Pose no. Tripoli, it's unanimous. If you'd like to register a no vote, please raise your hand. Seeing no hands raised, that will be gone as unanimous. Thank you. Are there any communications, disclosures, or recusals from members of the board? Alder Harrington McKinney, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. I need to disclose I'll be leaving the meeting. I'm quorum in another meeting and I do need to report back there. And so this second alternate needs to step into my place until I return.
All right, thank you, Alder Harrington McKinney. Are there any further communications, disclosures, or recusals? All right, seeing none. Do we have any registrations for public comment for items not on the agenda?
No, there are not.
Okay, thank you, Riva. Then we'll go over our first item for the evening. Let's start our 68075 Director's Report from Tom Lynch.
Yeah, I'll be somewhat brief. The Build Back Better Bill, which it's really hard to predict what the status is. In some ways, it seems like that thing's going to land and sometimes I think, no, it's not. But if it ever does land and it gets passed, it does have a fair amount of money for passenger rail. And if we are seeking an Amtrak station, that would be good for us. Amtrak also would provisions in the bill that would allow more flexibility in the way some of the funds are spent. We met with WISDOT on a couple of items. One of the items had to do with Stoughton Road. And they will be reinitiating that study. They're going to break it into three pieces, north, middle, and south. And I think the character of the whole study has drastically changed. There, it seems as though they're much more willing to look at lower build solutions. And even urban solutions. And so that is, I think that's, depends on what your feelings are, but if you're not big into freeways, that's, that's good news. So I believe that they would like to have the north and the middle section ready so that it could go to the Transportation Projects Commission on 24. We also kind of spoke with them about the possibility of getting the Glacial Drummond Trail punched through the interstate. It would have to occur on WSOR, right away controlled by WSOR. And it's just been a challenge for 20 years. But it would kind of be nice to be able, you know, we have such an extensive path system in Madison. And if we could connect that with the Glacial Drummond and Cottage Grove, that would be a nice thing. And then perhaps WISOD is going to be doing some modifications, might call it lane balance modifications, between the Seminole Highway ramp and Todd Drive ramps. It has to do a little bit with the flex lane. So what it will impact is it will impact flipping the switch on the flex lane on the Belt Line, which I don't think is a problem. I think they will want to be widening the Todd Drive Bridge. And so they'll begin some public involvement efforts on that. We may begin sometime in the next couple of months to solicit our RFPs and consultants for interchange studies that were approved in the 19, or the 2018 budget. One location is one up near Hanson or Hector Road, kind of to service a pretty huge UW facility there. The other one was desired over Milwaukee Street. And so that the studies does not mean that they would get built, just means that we would evaluate the access impacts to the interstate. And then we had our first all transportation department department meeting in 18 months. So that's been, we had a long pause. And I showed the slides to that. That was mostly meant to help employees realize that they're part of a bigger picture. And even though they're working on a small little aspect, perhaps in their own home, in their bedroom, you know, the bigger picture is still moving on. BRT, we finish up our 30% design meetings and there's a list of things that we're pursuing. And then we're, again, pursuing items on Vision Zero. You can just read those in the report. So that's kind of the summary.
Any questions for Tom? All right, seeing none. Thank you, Tom. Our next item, oh, Alder Foster, go ahead.
Sorry for the delay. Just one quick one on the Stoughton Road. Tom, I know this came up at MPO a while, like maybe six months or longer ago. I think I was selected as like a someone to sit on that. And I just had never heard anything from them. Do you know? You know, will there be kind of similar to like the Belt Line study where there's, you know, an opportunity to select some folks to sit in on those discussions? Do you have any sense of what that process will be like for the Stoughton Road one yet?
I don't. I do know that, you know, the South Coast region has a new director. And the tone has, has changed considerably. Like I, I think I think for, for an example, up in the north portion, north of Madison College, you might say, they feel like, well, this, this road here is going to stay pretty much the same, you know, let's just kind of reconstruct it. You know, it's, it's like that. I think they want to lead the section basically from Madison College to Highway 30. But then they said that they are very open to exploring urban solutions there. So I don't know if they are how they will approach it. My guess is that they might, you know, they had one consultant that had the whole quarter. My guess is that they're kind of resolicited. There'll be three different consultants, three separate projects.
Okay. Yeah, maybe as you continue to have conversations, I think it was helpful to have some folks, you know, connection points with this body on the Belt Line. And I think similarly probably for the Stoughton Road one, and obviously a lot of impact to land use plans and other things. So it's exciting to hear that there. Hopefully we've got a good opportunity to participate in that process. Thank you.
All right, any other questions for Tom? More comments? Seeing none, we will move on then to our next item. Let's just our 68076 BRT bike accommodations.
Hi, I'm Mike Chafalos, as most of you know. We met with Madison Bikes a few weeks ago. We're, we're developing some strategies for the BRT system to interact with bikes. So I'm just going to go through this if that's okay. So accommodating bikes with the BRT system, there's, there's a, there's a handful of, of ways that this comes into play. One is the interaction between bikes and buses on the, along the corridor, particularly at stations. We also want to address bike parking near the stations. And then bikes onboard the bus. And then finally, a B-cycle and how B-cycle relates to this and solving some of the last mile, mile problems. So bike, bus-bike interactions, we'd like to reduce or eliminate as many of the, of the bus-bike conflicts along the corridor as, as we can. Center, the center running sections, which is about half the system, will eliminate most of those interactions on its own simply by moving the bus to the left side of the street rather than the right side of the street. And then fewer stops along the corridor will help. And the third routing bikes around rather than through the station conflict areas. And I'll show that on this, on this slide here. So the, the major conflict that we have with bikes often as we operate on a day-to-day basis with our 40-some bus routes and 2,000 bus stops is, is this basic problem here. So the, the bus generally, you know, is in the lane to the left and the bikes in the bike lane to the right. As the bus moves over to the curb to serve the bus stop, the, the bikes, there's a conflict where, where we have to merge into the bike lane. And then bikes have to either wait or go around the bus in the travel lane. And then there's another conflict again as they cross over each other a second time. And this tends to compound itself because buses move relatively fast, but we stop a lot. Bikes move relatively slow, but they're relatively continuous. So we're kind of constantly passing each other through the, through the corridor. And this can be, be quite challenging as we continue to do this. So this is kind of the, 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 the standard way of dealing with the problem when we're side running in mixed traffic. So the, this is what I mean by routing the bikes around the back. So this, this tan area would be the station area and then the bikes will go around the backside of the station. And then re, come back together with the, the traffic stream afterwards. And so that eliminates both of those conflicts between the bikes and the buses. As we're serving the station, bikes can come and, come and go. The strategy has been used many times. This is often called a bus island. This, this bike, bike lane here can be either at street level or up at sidewalk level. But here generally you can see that the, the bus has stopped serving the station. And yet the bikes can still go around and there's really not a conflict. There's a small conflict between pedestrians and cyclists. But that's generally more manageable and the conflict is a lower speed conflict. Another thing that we're doing on the Mineral Point Road Corridor is we are, since we're shifting the, the bus lanes from the right lane to the left lane. And the right lane, which is today bus, bikes, and right turn only, serves as some, some level of bicycle facility on Mineral Point. That will be removed. And so there will no longer be a bike facility on Mineral Point Road. To compensate for that, we are widening the sidewalk on the north side of Mineral Point. So that will accommodate both, both bikes and pedestrians. On the east end of, of this corridor, the, this widened sidewalk on the north side will start at Whitney Way. And on the west side, it'll connect underneath the Belt Line to the existing path on the north side of Mineral Point Road that exists already. We chose the north side for a handful of reasons. There are fewer driveway conflicts on the north side. There's the existing path on the north side, west of the Belt Line. And then also generally we're thinking about people who are living, like particularly on the north side of Mineral Point, by, north of the West Town area. You know, they could be going anywhere, but if they're, if they're traveling by bike towards downtown, it would be inconvenient to cross Mineral Point to the south side and then cross again to go north again. So for that, those reasons, we decided to use the, the north side of Mineral Point as opposed to the south side. So that's generally what this will look like. So this is the north sidewalk. It'll be widened to accommodate both bikes and pedestrians. Bus lanes will be moved to the left side of the street with stations in the median. On East Washington, our, our, our basic strategy here is to stripe the middle lane or the left, the left lane, I suppose. Buses only. And that will leave two travel lanes most of the time. During rush hour in the, in the peak direction, the right-hand lane will be converted from parking and bikes to general purpose. So that we'll have three lanes only outbound in the afternoon and inbound in the morning. That's generally what, what this will look like with, with stations in the middle. So one, one fallout of that is that we do lose our bike facility during peak periods in the peak direction on East Washington through the Isthmus. And so our strategy to improve travel through the Isthmus by bike is to focus on the parallel corridors and make investments in the parallel corridors to make them more attractive, safer, and better bicycle facilities. So some of those improvements are the, are improving the Mifflin Street Bike Boulevard with bike boulevard treatment, like for example, diverters perhaps. This stretch of Gorham Street has already been, the bike lane has been extended through that. We're looking at a widened sidewalk if we can get it through this area across the Yarra River in order to kind of connect the Mifflin Street Bike Boulevard with the rest of the Isthmus. Crossing enhancement at Blair and Main Street, a Main Street Bike Boulevard east of the Yarra River with a crossing improvements at First Street. And a new path or an extension of the path connecting the Main Street Bike Boulevard to this bit of path here that exists along the railroad corridor. So that'll sort of get you around the curve and then you can use a local street or something to connect and come up towards Milwaukee Street or wherever you're going. The, this dotted line is where the bike lane, the all-day bike lanes will begin and end. So east, eastbound, the all-day bike lanes will begin around Milwaukee Street. Westbound, they'll end just, just over the Highway 30 bridge. So then we're also doing this Hort Street Bike Boulevard improvements. And then this, this widened sidewalk on the north side of East Washington in order to kind of fill this gap between the westbound bike lanes ending and the Starkweather Creek path. So some of these improvements, these, these improvements have been proposed in the, in the capital budget. Next, bikes onboard the buses. So bikes will be accommodated inside the bus, towards the back of the bus rather than in front. Today, bikes are accommodated on Metro Buses by an exterior rack on the front of the bus. Moving that to the inside of the bus for BRT makes loading, boarding and lighting faster. It makes it easier and it works better with the raised platforms. We don't want people stepping off the 13 and a half inch platforms to load their bikes if we can avoid it. There are several configurations for onboard bikes. And this is something that, that we're, we're working, working through to see what will work the best. This is kind of the default standard configuration of, of what I've called horizontal rack. This door here is the back door of the bus. So this is the articulation joint, of course. And so in between the articulation joint and the back door of the bus, there's space. This could be a center-facing seat, for example, with maybe, maybe three, two or three seats or something. So they just leave the seats out. And then they put a little, little bike rack there and you can fit maybe two to three bikes in that area. So that's, that's one option. It, it works. It's been used on, on other systems. It is a bit messy. Generally, people will sort of stand by their bikes. And if your bike is in the back and, you know, you have to get it out, people just kind of work through that. But it does work. Here is the, another option. This is an angled rack. So the bikes are angled up at a 45-degree angle. This is a, a neater and cleaner solution, but it's not necessarily better. It takes up a lot more space. For example, this, this picture on the right, there's no left-hand door on this, this particular bus. And so there would really only be room for at most two bikes over here, not three. And then as you can see from this picture on the left, the bikes really do kind of come into the, into the aisle where people are trying to walk. So this area is, is less flex, this, this, this angled alternative is less flexible. And it takes up a little more room. With the, the horizontal rack, this can also sometimes be used for things like luggage and so forth if there aren't any bikes there. But anyway, these are the two basic options. We're looking at them and we'll work with the vehicle manufacturer to see what's, what options will be available to us. So one, one thing that, the, the, the basic takeaway of, of this is that there really aren't any great options for onboard bike storage. Usually they, they kind of just make it work. It's, it's a, it's a little sloppy. It's a little messy, but it's, it's, it'll, it'll, the bikes onboard will, will definitely be accommodated. But what we'd like to really do is try to keep bikes parked at the stations if possible. That'll speed the boarding and the lighting process and, and, and leave more space for, for people on the bus. So to that end, we're, 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 we're basically trying to do these post and ring style bike racks near the station platforms. So we'd put in a handful of these, a couple, couple of these, these two bike racks near the, the stations. On the, I'll, for this, this diagram on the left here, the side platforms are on the right. So when we have side platforms, we would generally put the bike parking on the side opposite of the intersection. So if it's far side stop, it'd be after the, the station platform. If it's a near side stop, it would be before the station platform. The, the median center running platforms are a little bit different. One option is to put them on the side of the street. If we did that, what we'd like to do is put them on the side that's facing downtown. The idea being if you're, if you're biking towards downtown and you're trying to catch your bus, you generally not want to cross and then cross back. So you put them on the downtownward side. You would have to do that on your way home. However, you, you're not in a rush at that point. You've, you don't not worry about missing your bus. We're also looking at options where they can be located on the median closer to the platform. We're also looking at, like for example, there will be a, a, a small ramp here where in between the platform and the crosswalk. And so we're looking at potentially space there to do some bike parking if, where there's some extra space. So here's just an example of some bike parking that's been accommodated with a BRT station. This is in Alameda. This one was actually installed in the wrong place. There's this U-rack here. That's actually where the, this, these, these yellow rectangles are actually where the, the front door of, well, on the other side is, is where the front door of the bus opens. So you can see that there's pretty limited real estate here. But we're going to try to accommodate bike parking by, by finding some space where we can have a couple of those post and ring style racks anyway. So looking at the corridor, on Mineral Point, we have that side path on the north side of the street that we're proposing. We're looking at putting the, the bike parking on the north side in conjunction with that path. So you can ride on the path, park your bike on the path, go to the station and catch your bus. In the downtown area, there already is a lot of bike parking. You don't want to put just a couple small racks in an area that has very large bike parking needs and, and, and bike racks and other, other places around. So in those areas, we'll simply look at the bike parking that's there and see if some of the racks can be added or rearranged in order to optimize bike parking, basically through the UW, State Street, and Capitol Square. And then on East Washington where we're center running, that's where I think we're really investigating, putting some of the bike parking on the median to make it more convenient to park close to the station and, and get on the bus. And then as we go towards the, the far east end, we're side running towards Town Mall. And so all of that parking would generally be on the side next to the station platform. So at terminal stations, we're looking at additional bike parking primarily at our new park and ride facility that we're proposing on the west side on Junction Road. So just probably some, some multi-bike racks. We're investigating covered bike parking as well to protect from the elements. We're also investigating secured bike parking, like has been done in other cities and the UW has at least one I know of. In this case, you'd have to use some kind of card or some other device to access this, this area where you could park your bike. We're investigating it, but it appears to be this area where you could park your bike. Um, we're investigating it, but it appears to be unlikely at this point due to, um, just the administrative costs of administrating and maintaining, um, that kind of facility, uh, particularly at the ends of the line. Um, we're working with B-cycle. The blue rectangles are the BRT stations. Um, and then this is B-cycle's map, of course. Uh, so they are interested in working with us to incorporate B-cycle stations near the BRT sta- stations where it makes sense. Uh, we've highlighted a handful of them here, Whitney Way and Mineral Point, um, as well as university, uh, Seago and, um, Sheboygan, and then University and Farley as areas where we might be able to incorporate a B-cycle station in some way. Um, this helps us with the last mile problem, but we also want to make sure that there are other B-cycle stations nearby. So it doesn't really help if there's just, if we're just paralleling the BRT system with with BRT sta- with, uh, B-cycle stations. Um, but anyway, um, on the east side, also looking at Baldwin Street, First Street, Milwaukee Street and, uh, Marquette Street, uh, BRT stations. Uh, none of this is 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 final in any way. We're, um, we're working with B-cycle to try to, uh, come up with a a a solution here. Uh, so I think that's all I have in my presentation. I think we can turn it over to questions or comments. Tom, did you have anything to add?
Nope. Thanks for doing that.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Mike. Uh, any questions? Walter Foster, go ahead, please.
Thank you. Um, floating stops, have there, have you given any thought to the maintenance needs for for those in the winter time?
Yep, that's, um, that's the the primary challenge with those. Uh, we're, we're working with our maintenance staff to try to figure out how to handle those. Um, I think ha- the 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 conversation about whether it's at street, street level or sidewalk level plays into that. Um, and how many we end up, how many stations we end up that are like that. So yeah, that that is the primary challenge with those. But I think it's the bits are great enough that we're gonna, we're gonna try to make something work.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's worth it as well. I just know it's been a struggle for agencies that are tasked with doing that maintenance when it's not fully anticipated and and budgeted and all that kind of stuff. So it would be good to for us to make sure as we begin to implement that we've got the right amount of operating, uh, you know, coverage, uh, for for those needs. But it it also seems like it should be pretty doable since we'll have to go out and clear the stations themselves anyways. I think just incorporating it in with that work, whoever's going to be kind of, you know, managing that, it seems like it would be feasible.
Yeah, absolutely. I think that's our direction and I think that's why having them up at sidewalk level may be easier for us to maintain rather than having some specialized piece of equipment that has to go just for that.
Yeah, I think so. I think if it if it were part of a larger protected lane or something, then maybe ha- you know, having a street level, it can just be done as part of that whole thing makes sense. But yeah, for these, I think having them at sidewalk level makes a lot of sense. Um, one quick thought in terms of the bikes on the bus, um, folding bikes, you know, so I don't think they're real popular here in Madison because there's not a lot of use case for them, but that might be something, um, I don't know, I don't know how those would be accommodated differently or or better on a on BRT, but that might be something that would be a a better fit in some ways than trying to accommodate full-size bikes onboard.
Yeah, the the folding bikes are actually small enough that you could just bring on and just kind of have with you, like a suitcase or a stroller. Um, you know, we try to have people bring strollers that can just be folded up and, you know, you can just kind of keep it with you. That's the direction we'd like to go. The other side of the conversation is what about bigger bikes, um, electric bikes, bikes with trailers or cargo bikes? Um, the basic answer is that those basically just don't fit on the bus. You can see from those those diagrams and pictures, you know, even a basic size, normal-sized bike barely fits. Um, we just really can't fit anything bigger. Uh, but as far as like electric bikes go and and the angled racks, that's one of the challenges as well is that, um, you know, if you have to lift it up, as electric bikes become a little bit more common, we might see more of those and particularly the people who are riding electric bikes are because they want some of that, you know, assistance. Um, you know, it's it's a little bit harder for people to lift their bikes up onto the racks. We certainly don't want, you know, people making up their own, you know, not using the racks and trying to just put them in the aisles and so forth.
Yeah, no, I I think it is a real challenge. Um, there was a a pretty good study done. I think it was in the Netherlands around sort of biking and and transit. And one of the big takeaways from that that I read was really think about kind of the 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 more peripheral stops as as really needing to focus more on accommodating bike parking for people's individual bikes, right? So they get on at home where they don't maybe have, uh, good access to bike share, ride their own bike, park it. And then if they're heading downtown or, you know, somewhere more dense, then they can rely on on B-cycle coverage when they get off at the other end. So I just wanted to kind of emphasize that. I think it makes a lot of sense. But in terms of, you know, where we're thinking about expanding some of our B-cycle coverage, you you know, probably isn't going to serve a ton of needs if we if we put them out by themselves, you know, further out. And so I think just continuing to support kind of density expansion of B-cycle in the kind of core city area, um, could still really help with that last mile on, at least on the, the sort of the the downtown end. And then really, yeah, trying to make sure we can accommodate individual bike storage, um, at other points along the lines. Um, to that end, just a couple of thoughts to keep in mind with that. One would be, um, adding some curb cuts where it makes sense, where we're, you know, we're going to have these additional bike parkings. Don't have to kind of go up through the sidewalk area to get, uh, in and out of that that parking. And then, um, in terms of like potential for covered parking, um, I mean, the terminal locations, it seems like it could make sense, although I think I guess it depends on how, what we anticipate for the volume. There might be other locations and and it may be hard to anticipate, but I'm even thinking like First and East Wash with, you know, connections to the Yara Path. I could imagine that one being kind of a pretty popular one where people would bike from both sides and kind of have First and East Wash be a a sort of good connector route. So maybe just trying to anticipate, um, and and at least respond to where we're seeing the most demand and then really try and find some real estate to put up more bike parking and and ideally some of that covered parking you were talking about.
Yeah, that makes sense. I agree.
I just have one, uh, other question. It's kind of tangentially related, but, um, I thought this was all really great. It's it's good to know all of this thinking is going on. Um, have we done anything similar or are we planning on doing it for our our walking network?
Uh, wha- what do you mean? In in terms of patching together sidewalk to?
Yeah, I mean, so we've been, you know, doing a lot around, um, homeless service location work and thinking about, uh, locations for a a men's shelter or alternate sites, uh, like, uh, you know, Bartolong is one of the ones that's come up on the list, um, that we recently acquired. Um, I know that's a neighborhood, for example, that doesn't have sidewalks today. And so just like looking at where the the BRT stops are going to be and where that expected block shed is and identifying areas that that have gaps in, um, in the sidewalk network and in the walk network.
Yeah, we haven't done a great deal of that yet, but I think I think we'll get into into some of that. Most of the of the route is fairly well-covered with, uh, sidewalk. There are a couple of gaps towards the far east end. Um, I think Wright Street and Anderson has, there's, there's some gaps in there and then out by East Town Mall. Um, as I'm sure you're aware, there's also the East Town, um, planning, uh, planning study going on on there. Tom, did you have anything to add?
Yeah, as part of the, you know, we did get a planning grant from the FTA for TOD and about one-third of the scope of that planning grant is, it's a kind of inventory, uh, the pedestrian structure, infrastructure around these stations and, you know, what could be done, what's needed. So that hasn't started yet. You know, we're, we're trying to, trying to just clear all these hurdles or whatever, but that is on on the list. And the TOD study is really being headed up by planning. Then we have, I guess, about a third portion of that.
Sounds great. Thank you.
All right. Any further questions or comments? Chuggling some screens here, sorry. All right, then our next item will be, um, Legisstar six eight zero seven seven, um, electric bus plan.
Uh, good evening, everyone. Um, going to, if I can share my screen here. All right. Anyone see that? Okay, so, um, I'm here today to talk to you about, um, the planning work, um, and really some background information on the like transition to electric buses here at Metro. Um, you'll notice this is not, this is not a written plan document. Um, I don't intend to prepare that. I think there's just a lot in flux in the industry right now. So I wanted to give you, uh, uh, some information on, um, where things are right now, where I see things going, uh, where I see where the opportunities will be to make that transition, but ultimately, um, ensuring that we need to be flexible to respond to the technology, um, that that does or does not exist. So first, um, you know, why are we pursuing electric buses? Um, I think many of you will probably find that an obvious question. Um, you know, our our goals for climate change, um, are, you know, to reduce fossil fuel emissions by uh, significant margins. Um, but there's local air quality issues to be concerned about with diesel exhaust, uh, just kind of at the street level as well, especially in areas that are fairly, um, concentrated with people. Um, there is an opportunity here to reduce operating costs in the long term. Uh, electric propulsion is much more efficient. Um, and, uh, we can reduce our costs compared as compared to buying diesel fuel. Um, and then the buses themselves, um, are smooth and quiet and so, um, they offer some up, some benefits and service quality as well. Um, what are some of the, some of the other options that are out there to, uh, other than straight diesel? Um, so many, um, many agencies have in, you know, not many in the last ten years or so, but, you know, fifteen, twenty years ago, a lot of, uh, movement was towards, uh, CNG or compressed natural gas. Um, it's obviously still a fossil fuel, um, but it is a cleaner version. Um, and many systems do run entirely on CNG. Um, but it really is a technology you need to commit to. Um, it's, you need to build basically pressurization tanks and other refueling equipment onsite. It's quite expensive. Um, and so, um, it's not really something that many people are doing now because the plan is eventually to move to electric. And so there, uh, most agencies don't want to make that investment in that fueling equipment, uh, only to give it up, you know, ten to fifteen years down the road. So, uh, another option that's been out there, uh, for a while and actually fleet uses quite extensively is biodiesel. Um, this is, uh, rene- uh, refined from plant stock, um, uh, basically, you know, vegetable oil, um, can can run in most diesel engines. Um, however, it is a solvent and so, um, running it through engines that have run diesel for a long time and there's lots of soot and tar and things in those engines and fuel systems. Um, it cleans all that out, which is great, but it it tends to plug things up as well. And so you have to go through a very detailed cleaning process before you start using it. Um, it also has pretty cold, poor cold weather performance. So, um, basically as it gets cold, the fuel starts to gel, um, and no longer will pump through the fuel lines. So, uh, it, uh, is typically in a winter, in a place like Wisconsin, in the winter, um, you know, even in places that use a hundred percent biodiesel in the winter, it goes down to five percent. Um, and then the the biggest challenge for us is that the warranty issue. Um, our manufacturer of our engines, Cummins, um, does not, will not warranty the use of biodiesel, anything greater than twenty percent. Um, and so that's a big, uh, a big barrier for us to go to full-scale adoption, but, uh, we certainly have some windows for some smaller scale adoption. And there's a relatively new variant called renewable diesel. Um, it's actually still using, uh, plant stock, but it's refined in a different way. Um, that actually results in it being chemically almost identical to actual diesel fuel. Um, so it doesn't have any of the downsides of biodiesel. You can literally just, um, fill it and go, um, without any modifications to any of your fueling systems or, um, bus systems. Um, has good cold weather performance. The problem is that it's right now is very expensive and hard to get. Um, it's becoming more and more popular, um, in California and a little bit in, uh, kind of the the east coast. Uh, but other than now, it's still very difficult to get in Wisconsin. Um, and so in order to move heavily in that direction, we would need some significant partnerships with some local refineries that could, um, start producing this on a large scale. So, um, going back to the electric bus piece, um, so, I'm sorry. Um, sorry, the electric buses are gaining significant market share, uh, in in the transit space. Um, as I mentioned already, that, uh, has benefits of being quiet, no localized emissions. Um, there's fewer moving parts, so in theory, the maintenance should be easier in the long term. Uh, basically electric motor versus, you know, fuel pumps and filters and piston engines and transmissions and all of that all replaced by a single electric motor. Um, one reason why electric buses are making particular inroads in in the bus fleet, um, is because it's a consistent duty cycle. You know, you imagine that, um, an electric car, um, some days you may only need to drive it twenty miles, but other days you need to drive it, you know, five hundred miles, uh, and you can't make those long trips in the electric car without some significant pre-planning. The nice thing about buses, they run the same number of miles every day. Um, and they never, never would need to run more. So, um, once a bus can get to that kind of magic number of three hundred miles on a charge, um, it truly can, um, do everything you need it to do. Um, and then, as I mentioned earlier, the low fuel costs of electricity, um, as compared to diesel fuel. So the range is, uh, the range of the bus is a significant barrier. And there's two, um, solutions for charging right now. Um, the first is, um, what's called en route charging. So these are charging equipment that's, um, that's installed in the field at the end of the route. So normally a bus, uh, has a layover at the end of its route that allows the driver to take a break and recover any scheduled time. And, you know, if they get to their endpoint five minutes late, we want to make sure they don't start their next trip five minutes late. So, uh, we build in a little bit of buffer time there for them and we can take advantage of that time by charging there. Um, we can also, um, by doing this allows us to use a smaller battery, which saves us some cost. Um, and by kind of taking little sips and refilling every trip, uh, we basically mean that we can run all day long. But it does mean that we need to add a little bit of driver time at the end of the route, uh, and district and install this equipment at various places throughout the city in order to make this a viable solution for our entire fleet. Um, and so that still presents certainly some challenges. Um, and we are pursuing this for the BRT project, uh, which is a little easier when we have, you know, frequent service, a lot of buses, um, serving these locations and we have control over the endpoints where we can build things. Um, it it is a lot more difficult, um, to use it for local routes that might be ending, um, you know, next to a gas end of town, uh, because, you know, these are, these investments are, you know, three hundred thousand dollars, uh, in these chargers. And that's not something you want just hanging over the street for, you know, a semi truck to maybe run into. Um, and so we really need to control these in off-street locations. So the other, uh, model, uh, for charging is, you know, more akin to what we do today where we fuel the bus in the garage. Um, we call it depot charging. Um, it's a lot easier to build the infrastructure. We can just, um, build it all in our facility. And this is actually a picture of our charger, um, that we have on site at at our facility. We don't have to worry about the driver waiting through the time for the charge. Um, that charging happens overnight when the driver's not being paid. But we do have to install larger batteries. Um, and so that means the buses themselves are quite a bit more expensive. Um, and the bottom line is even the lar- the largest batteries that exist today, um, especially in winter, um, just can't get us through a whole day of service on all of our routes right now. Um, the, a lot of the, um, the mileage you see from manufacturers, um, often is intentionally ignoring the HVAC requirements in terms of heating and air conditioning. Um, and so while there are buses that Um, and so while there are buses that on a 70-degree day would get us through our entire service, um, they would not be able to do the same when it's 100 degrees or when it's zero degrees. Um, and so that's, that's still a big barrier. And actually, uh, nearly all electric buses that are shipped, um, to cold weather climates, including us, um, do still have a, an auxiliary fueled heater, uh, using diesel fuel. So, um, while they don't use any fuel in their propulsion, they do still use it for heating the bus. Um, it's obviously a, a fraction of what it otherwise would have used, but I just want to make sure you're all aware that even a fully electric bus will have some, um, diesel fuel use. So what are our remaining challenges? Um, cost is a big one. Um, this, these buses are not a one-to-one replacement. We can't just take, at least right now, we can't take one diesel bus in replace it with a full electric bus. Um, that's because of the range issues that I just talked about, um, and some of the maintenance issues we'll talk about in a minute. Um, a- and then the buses themselves, um, are more expensive. So between the combination of each bus being more expensive and needing more of them, um, ultimately, we'd expect to spend about twice as much, uh, in terms of capital dollars for the electric buses versus the, the diesel. Um, that's not to say that we shouldn't do it, uh, it's just something, uh, a very real barrier that we need to account for. Lost my mouse here. There you go. And then the other piece, um, that's hopefully a bit more short-term is the challenges around maintenance. Um, this technology, while simpler in practice, is much less proven, um, in reality. And so, um, there are challenges with it, um, that maybe the diesel manufacturers have spent 100 years ironing out, you know, every little wrinkle, um, and they've gotten really good at that. Uh, and then the electric buses just haven't had that much time to, to catch up. Uh, the other challenge is that there's a lot of manufacturers out there that, um, you know, recognize the potential benefit of electric buses, but are pretty new to actually building buses. Um, and so that's created a lot of issues, uh, where many of the electric buses, um, have, um, reliability issues that are completely unrelated to their, their electric powertrain. Um, you know, things like doors and floors and, um, you know, windows and water leaks and things like that that, um, are just, uh, more of a challenge for some of these, uh, more novice manufacturers. And then, uh, even though, uh, there's fewer moving parts and maintenance should be easier, what maintenance does need to happen, we just don't have people trained for, right? It's a very different skill set. You essentially need to be an electrician, um, to, to, uh, work on some of these buses. And it will take us time, uh, to get our me- mechanic staff trained up in that new, very new skill set. And so all this adds up, it, um, with these buses, um, is that we expect to see more downtime. The buses, um, you know, out of service more often than their diesel counterparts. And that plays into the last slide where I just talked about needing more of them. Um, and there was actually a, a big study that was done in Toronto where they, um, bought, you know, three or four of each of the manufacturer's electric buses. Um, and, uh, um, basically they ranged in what they call uptime. So the percentage of time they were actually able to use in service from about 60 to 80%, depending on the manufacturer. Um, whereas electric, or where their diesel buses were more in the 85% neighborhood, 85 to 90%. So, um, there is a very real challenge there with the buses being down more often. Um, and like I said, o- often it's for things unrelated to the powertrain or because we just don't have the maintenance staff to work, to do the work that's necessary on them. So, uh, all that stuff will take time, um, and training to, to work out. So ultimately, what are we planning at Metro? Um, so the first thing that I feel is most important is that our transition to electric buses shouldn't degrade our service quality. Um, at the end of the day, the most efficient bus is the one people ride. Uh, you know, a diesel bus with 40 people on it is still a lot more efficient than an electric bus with 20. Um, and so we need to make sure and be cognizant, um, that we are doing this transaction, transition in a way that, um, that doesn't risk, um, disruptions in our service. And so in that way, we need to make sure hedge, hedge those risks and be aware of those risks and plan for them so that it doesn't impact our service. For the BRT, we are planning to use a mixed strategy, uh, about two-thirds electric and one-third diesel. Um, again, uh, both as a, a, a risk hedge, but also, um, as a, a very real cost consideration. Um, I, I hope that we'll be able to experiment with biofuels more in the short term, either, uh, through some refinery partnerships with the, the renewable diesel, um, or continue to work with our engine manufacturer Cummins to allow more biodiesel use, um, in our facility and our fleet. Um, around 2025, um, is when the industry generally thinks that the buses will be in a place where they can run all day, um, as that technology matures. And so I would hope at that point, we can start making all of our bus purchases be electric. Um, but, uh, just so you're all, are, all aware, buses last anywhere from 12 to 15 years on, on average. Um, sometimes a little bit longer. Um, so that would mean that it's likely 2040 before we're, before we are fully transitioned, um, to a new electric fleet. Uh, but then the, the biggest piece, um, is that we need to be flexible. Um, you know, again, technology, um, prognostications have always been a, a little bit rosier than what reality has been. I think your, we'd asked the, the industry five years ago if self-driving cars would be here right now. They would have said, yes, they would be, and obviously they're not. Um, and so, um, we just need to be flexible, um, to, to respond. It very well may be that in 2025, um, the buses still aren't there to where we can use them, um, as we need to, and we need to continue to hedge those risks. Um, or maybe two years from now, every manufacturer is solved the puzzle and, and can put out a fully electric bus that can do everything. Um, and so we can move that up, but ultimately, we just need to be flexible, um, and respond to the actual technology. Um, and then that's all I've got, but on a personal, I just, I, I know some of this is, um, comes across as me being, uh, kind of a negative Nelly in terms of some of these things. Uh, I want to assure you that's not the case. Um, you know, I'm a big believer in electric buses, and I think that that is the way that we need to go. Um, but I just, um, we need to be smart about it and, and plan accordingly, uh, because the worst thing that could happen is we go fully to electric and then we have fleet failures that cause us to miss service and, and we lose ridership because ultimately that's going to be a lot more, that's going to be worse for the environment for us to lose ridership than it would be to, to continue using diesel, so. Uh, but with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Thanks, Justin. Um, Randy, you're up first. Go ahead.
Uh, thank you for the presentation, Justin. It was very good. Um, I think my question goes back to slide six, but it, uh, maybe it's just a clarification or maybe I misunderstood. But when you spoke of, uh, heat, you mentioned, uh, the heat for a bus, come up passenger heat is, uh, you would need a, a diesel. Did I hear you correctly?
That's right, yeah. So even, even fully electric buses do use a fuel, a diesel fuel-powered heater, um, in the winter, um, and to heat the air temperature inside the cabin.
And, and is that because it's too much of a drain on the, the electricity for the promotion of a bus? Is, is, is that why?
That's, that's right. If you, um, basically the, the amount of electricity that's required to heat the interior from, when it's zero degrees outside, um, you know, that basically would double the need for the battery capacity in the bus. Um, and so the cost of that, as well as just the weight of a battery of that size, um, is just a bit too much, um, for these buses to handle. And, and that's one piece I didn't really talk about is, you know, you may wonder, why can't they just add more batteries, right? To, to make it go further. Um, but there's a very real, I mean, these are motor vehicles that, um, you know, go down the road, and, and there's a very real amount of weight they can sustain.
Yeah.
And so to, to continue piling batteries on would, would exceed either the weight limit for many streets that they run on or just the, the ability for their frame to handle that, that load.
It, just as a follow-up, and, and for the AC then, in warmer months, is that, uh, diesel driven then as well?
No, the AC is still electric, so the, you know, if you can imagine kind of the ideal temperature being 70 degrees, um, the regular, you know, heat pump, air conditioning system can easily swing that 30 degrees one way or the other. You know, either from 100 down to 70 or from, you know, fif- 40 or 50 up to 70. So it's really in places where you see temperatures below 40 degrees, um, or so, that you see these diesel-powered heaters. Um, places like California, or like, you know, California and Florida and the South, they can get these buses without the extra heat, um, just because they never see temperatures below 40 degrees.
Sure. Alright, thank you. We can only hope that technology changes, but thank you.
Alright, Alda Foster, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you for the presentation, Justin. Really helpful. Um, do you, what can you tell us about where other fleets are at? Um, you know, like just in general, kind of how many and how deep have, you know, have other fleets transitioned? And in particular, um, ones that have sort of similar winter climates? Um, that, that does seem like, uh, something really particular that we need to be careful of, not just for the, the heating issue that was discussed, but just battery capacity and even like reliability of the en route charging systems in extreme weather. Um, you know, what can you share about where other, others are at? How far behind are we as compared to the, the cutting-edge, uh, fleets?
Sure. Um, so the, the agency that has most transitioned is Antelope Valley Transit in California. I think they're like 75% electric at this point, but, um, they're in a very temperate climate where, um, they never really have to worry about, you know, extreme cold. And they also, um, subsidized heavily a new electric bus manufacturer to come to their city. So, um, that's part of their subsidy, I think, is to buy these buses. Um, many of the other cities, um, in the Midwest and with colder climates that have done that, um, have had mixed success. Um, you know, I came from Indianapolis. We were, at, at one point, we had the largest electric bus fleet in the country. Um, and it, it was not without challenge. Um, and, and we did have, you know, many challenges. The buses did not meet their contractual requirements in terms of range. Um, and so the manufacturer had to come in and modify the buses and, and repair additional charging infrastructure for us. Um, because they just, you know, again, startup manufacturer made promises they just couldn't keep. Um, and fortunately, they paid for it, but it didn't, it did have impacts on the service. Um, Minneapolis, um, has gone pretty, uh, they, they purchased many vehicles, but, um, again, the size of their fleet is so enormous that, you know, they could afford to have 50 buses or so that may or may not work. Um, and they did have issues. They, uh, rolled them out initially on one of their new BRT lines, um, and then had to pull them out of service, um, to make mod- other modifications to their, the buses and the running way and charging and all of that. Unfortunately, they are back in service now, um, but there was a big, big falter there. Um, and then Duluth, um, has, I think, 10 buses, um, from Proterra. Again, they've had, uh, they are in service now, but there were a lot of, uh, e-buses along the way, a lot of transitional, uh, challenges that came up. Um, again, a lot of them, nothing to do with the electrification, but just, um, the bus itself, um, that they had to overcome, so. Um, we're by no means, uh, way behind. There are many other agencies that have not done anything. Um, I, I think actually, like Milwaukee doesn't have any yet. They've placed an order for, um, quite a few, I think, but they don't have any right now. Um, you know, a lot of the big agencies have experimented, you know, Chicago has a few dozen, um, but out of their bus fleet of 2,000, uh, you know, it's, it's really a drop in the bucket. And so, um, they can afford to experiment a little bit more. Um, certainly, I would, I would categorize this as kind of middle of the road at this point.
And we, um, we did have one, at least on order, that we, we still have not had success with, right?
We, we have three actually in the building, um, that we're working on, working with manufacturer on resolving an issue. Again, completely unrelated to the electrification piece. Um, we hope to have that resolved before the end of the year, uh, and have those three buses at service.
Then, um, in terms of the, the BRT, so I know you shared that it'll be sort of a mixed fleet. I think this especially is like, these are the ones needed for the University Avenue route, um, where we won't have that en route charging. Um, are you concerned at all that now, there's, there's a lot of interest in, in doing this? Seems like a great moment to, to kind of make a, even a small jump in that direction. But are you, like, what, how nervous are you about having that impact of, of really big? I mean, getting BRT up and running, like, what if everything was perfect except for, you know, we did run into some of those kind of issues with electric buses?
Uh, I think, um, well, the big thing in my mind is that, so if you remember, we did a, um, the council approved a sole source negotiation with New Flyer for these buses because they, they really are the only ones that can produce, uh, this longer 60-foot bus that is electric and have doors on both sides. Um, I, I think that alleviates a lot of my concerns and that they are a very experienced manufacturer, and they, um, they've been very conservative in terms of what they promise, um, to make sure that they actually can meet what they promise. And so I have less concern on that front. Um, we also are building the system, the charging infrastructure to be very redundant. Um, you know, normally, uh, most systems that are doing these en route chargers, they'll just do one at one end. Um, but as you point out, you know, the chargers aren't 100% reliable either. Um, you know, if there's a power outage or, um, a big windstorm or something that might impact something. Um, and so we've mitigated that by, uh, we're actually installing three of these, um, on the BRT, um, so that we have that redundancy. The bus can still, can miss a charge and, and just make it to the other end, um, and charge again if it needs to. Um, but we, that way we've got that protection. But also, actually, our three separate chargers are with three separate power companies, uh, which is another, um, redundancy issue. Um, you know, often, um, there's a big concern when you do all your charging at the garage, that's all often, it's all always served by one power company through one substation. If that, if there's a major outage in that network, you're out of luck. Um, and so by having this redundancy of three separate chargers, when we can get away with just one and having all three of these being on separate circuits with separate agents, separate power companies, um, I think, um, gives me a lot more confidence that, uh, whatever challenges we will face, which we will face challenges, um, that we'll have planned, that planned for them sufficiently to make it through without sacrificing service.
That sounds great. My last question is just in terms of, you know, I think you really reinforced how much unknowns and variability there is with all of this, and it's really, I think, dependent on technology. Um, when do you think would be a good time to come back and, and give us an update? Even if it's, you know, really no change since last time I was here, would, you know, would you coming back in a year? Would that be too soon to be able to do that? Or just thinking it would be helpful to kind of keep this in front of us and, and know of, you know, kind of, yeah, where, where, where is technology at and are we on track for that, you know, 2025 date or, um, how's it looking?
Yeah, I, I think, um, certainly once a year seems reasonable to me. Um, you know, until, until there's a, some major movement, at which point I can come back a little bit more, more frequently. But I, I think coming back late next year makes sense.
Well, thanks again for the presentation and for, um, really doing your due diligence in the country.
Alright, uh, Margaret, go ahead.
Yeah, a couple of questions, Jason. Um, first, uh, so we've got, you said, three Proterra, both, and I assume they're 42 footers or 40 footers, uh, in the garage, but they're not on the road yet because they have, there's an issue you're working through with the manufacturer. Can you tell us what that issue is?
Um, yeah, it's, uh, basically some of the, um, the ADA procurement areas, um, were not built to, um, our standards, um, and so it, it created some conflicts between, um, people and mobility devices. Basically, um, two could, one could not get off before the other one got off. If there were two people in wheelchairs or other mobility devices. And so, uh, that was not acceptable in our view. Um, and so they're modifying, um, some of that interior layout to, to make sure that's not a problem.
Okay, so is the intention then to keep those Proterra, the, the shorter buses, and then also have the articulated, but the New Flyer articulated buses? So basically have a mixed fleet. articulated, but the New Flyer articulated buses, so basically have a mixed fleet uh, in terms of the manufacturer?
Yeah, that's right. So we, we currently, for our, our fleet currently is mostly Gillig and New Flyer, um, probably about two thirds Gillig, one third New Flyer, and then these three Proterras. Um, and then now we'd be adding the New Flyer sixty foot electric articulated buses. Um,
Okay.
So it's, it's already a mixed fleet. Um, so I would expect it to always be.
So do they require um, separate types of charging stations? Is it a proprietary charging station?
So um, Proterra has recently moved uh, more into a non proprietary charging space, which is good. Um, early on, they had their own specific charging specifications, which um, was, was a big challenge uh, for some of the mixed fleets. But um, now with the exception of one manufacturer, BYD, um, the others have all moved towards a, a more uh, brand agnostic charging, so you can mix and match.
Okay. And, and BYD is off the table because of the location of the manufacturer, correct?
Um, yeah, BYD actually was, uh, there was a federal law that passed two years ago that um, basically said, it, it was really aimed at the Chinese rail, rail car manufacturer um, that was basically underbidding all the American manufacturers and driving them out of business. It was subsidized by the Chinese government. And so there was a uh, a, a law that was passed that basically precluded Chinese owned rolling stock manufacturer or Chinese subsidized rolling stock manufacturers um, from being eligible for federal funding. Uh, and that swept up BYD in that as well.
Okay.
Even though their buses are still around.
Are there um, any northern cities that are running these New Flyer articulated buses?
There are, um, you know, New Fly, New Flyer is the biggest manufacturer um,
Right.
in the country. Um, and they um, they've done quite a few, actually. I think the most recent deployment was in Spokane, Washington, uh, where they've got this specific bus. Uh, I don't think it's quite as cold there as it is here, but
No.
It's similar.
It's definitely not as cold there as it is here. It was Duluth running the New Flyers or who?
Duluth is running Proterras.
They're running Proterras. Okay. So I guess I'm asking, is there any northern city in actual running conditions? A true northern city, not Spokane?
Yeah, Minneapolis has some of these um, as well. They're, they're charging, they're using more depot charging. Um, but Minneapolis is definitely has some of these sixty foot electric.
Okay. Um, another question is, is there any availability of federal assistance uh, for training mechanics or electricians, as you said, to work on these vehicles? Has the FTA been developing any programs of that type? Is there a chance we can get a hand here from the feds?
You know, not that I'm aware of. Um, honestly, we have some work to do with our union to, to try to create some of this new skill set. Um, and we're working, uh, we have an agreement in concept to form an apprenticeship program um, that we're working through the details of, but certainly part of that we would hope um, include some of this electric um, training.
Okay. And finally, in terms of the um, whether or not electric buses are in reality green, um, how long do these, how long are the batteries expected to last and what happens at the end of their life cycle?
So the, a conservative assumption is that the battery lasts half as long as the bus. And so we would need to replace the battery, you know, at the six or seven or eight year mark of the bus. Um, there's not been a lot of, you know, there's not many electric buses that are that old. Um, and, but the, so not a lot of them have been replaced yet, but the general running plan um, in most agencies is to create um, use those old batteries to create some static energy storage. Uh, so basically create a bank of batteries at the facility um, that can be used to uh, kind of meter the electric use when the buses are charging. Uh, because our, uh, actually, and I didn't put it in here, but uh, it's a little bit uh, inside baseball, I guess, but um, the, the cost of bus charging actually has very little to do with the, you know, number of kilowatt hours it uses. Um, when you're talking about voltage, uh, at this, this higher voltage and this much power draw, it's actually demand charges um, that, that hits you the most. And so it's basically what's your peak draw of power at one, at any one given time? Um, that's what really sets uh, how much you pay for electricity rate perspective. Um, obviously the, the cost per kilowatt hour is a part of the calculation too. Um, but it's often about half of it's the demand charge. Um, and so by creating these banks of batteries, we can, you know, trickle charge those batteries all day long. And then when there's a big peak demand charging for the buses, we can draw from those batteries that are just sitting on site rather than from the power grid. And we can basically reduce how much electricity we, or our cost of electricity for charging. So that was, I was very in the weeds, but that's the plan.
Well, no, I mean, it's actually, what happens with the lithium batteries is a pretty critical issue. Uh, and, you know, what proportion of the cost of these vehicles at this point is actually in the battery packs themselves?
Uh, it's, it's a lot. It's probably nearly, nearly half the vehicle cost.
And a while back, and this is quite a while back, we had been in discuss, the city had been in discussions with uh, some of the utility companies uh, about potentially subsidizing the purchase of electric vehicles. Are any of those talks uh, continuing?
Yeah, so we've had a few conversations. The challenge is they wouldn't just flat up subsidize, they would help basically finance, right? They would uh, and pay some, they, many of them have offered to pay upfront capital um, for kind of a long-term lease arrangement. Um, in our case, you know, capital money is a little bit easier to come by than operational money. And so I don't think it's in our best interest to um, to increase our operational costs, to reduce our capital costs. Uh, and so I, I think those sorts of arrangements probably make less sense for, sense for us. And we'd probably prefer to negotiate lower electric rates um, in the long term, um, to reduce some of our operating costs.
And fine, one last question. I know Madison, the city has an office of sustainability. I don't know precisely what it's called these days. Are, is Metro working with them to kind of do a full three sixty-five analysis of um, these vehicles from start to end uh, in terms of, you know, just comparing how sustainable they are versus bio, versus any of the other fuel sources?
Uh, I know, we've had conversations. Um, I don't know of any comprehensive analyses um, that, that are being done, but Tom, did you have something you want to say?
Yeah, we, we have had some interaction, you know, they're right now just uh, kind of in the beginning stages of getting that department all set up. Uh, the cover, and the conversations, we've had a lot of some of the messaging is, is basically how clean is our grid, right? Because our buses are only as clean as our
Precisely.
Yeah. And so um, I'm sure that they'll have more detailed thoughts as we partner with them in the future, but it, it's interesting. They did do some carbon calculations for us, just literally within the last month or something. And a lot of it was dependent on, you know, what is M G N E and what are, what is the line promising to do with their electricity over the next twenty years?
Sorry, I couldn't hear that last sentence.
Oh, a lot of it has, depends on what is M G N E and Alliant and, and some of these other providers planning to do with their energy over the next twenty years.
Right. Thank you. Those were my questions.
All right. Any further questions or come, um, Carrie, go ahead.
Thanks for this nice conversation and discussion. This is really interesting. Um, and for the presentation. Um, you guys just covered my first question, which was, is there anything to talk about um, with respect to uh, generation issues or uh, sources? But I think that was, that was covered. And then my other question was about, like operationally, is there anything useful or are, are there decisions around how the adoption of an electric bus fleet interacts with or is contingent on or is reinforced by other fleet decisions in the city, especially the heavy duty vehicles? Like if, if Metro gets good at this, is it, do other departments pile on? If other departments get good at this, is it easier for Metro to, to go forward?
Yeah, I'd say definitely. I know the city fleet department um, has worked extensively on biodiesel and electrification. Um, they particularly have made a lot of progress on the biodiesel front. Um, and we've had a lot of conversations with them about how they've, you know, what their lessons learned have been and, and how they've been successful in that. Ultimately, um, unfortunately, we have a different engine manufacturer than most of their vehicles. Um, that is a lot more uh, restrictive um, on the biodiesel front. But um, again, uh, their, their lessons learned have been hugely helpful for us and they'll continue to be. Um, you know, our, our, our fleet is quite a bit different than theirs, um, has a different duty cycle and, um, you know, does different, you know, has that higher demand, you know, constantly throughout the day. Um, that uh, makes things not quite apples to apples, but certainly there are lessons learned that we can share with one another.
Okay.
Go ahead and ask your question.
All right. Any further questions or comments for Justin? All right, seeing none. Um, our last item then is um, let's see. Legistar six eight zero seven eight. Sorry, I'm sure you can hear me or not. Our, our next item then is Legistar uh, six eight zero seven eight, our twenty twenty-two um, proposed meeting schedule. Tom, did you want to bring that one up?
Yeah, I can uh, share a, a screen. Uh, we put this together um, trying to avoid conflicts because we have members, they're on the finance committee and we are supposed to have members that are also in the plan commission. And um, it's actually, it was more difficult than I thought, you know, to find dates where there were um, no conflicts. He, this proposed uh, schedule shows basically we meet on, on Mondays, we would have twenty total meetings. The red represents conflicts with finance committee, which Alder Furman is on. And then uh, the blue represents conflict with the plan commission meeting. And we do not have a member. We have an empty seat that's supposed to be filled by a, a plan commission member. And so that is that. We've also avoided most of the holidays. Actually, I think we've uh, uh, we've avoided all of them. Providing we, we get done before sundown on, on May second to uh, miss, figure out, if I said that correctly. So that's that's it. Yes.
All right, Alder Furman, go ahead.
Um, thank you, Tom. Um, thank you, Chair. Um, I, I, you know, I understand how hard it is to get these schedules together. Um, I'm probably, you know, hopefully we also get a plan commission member soon. I would just ask that the, you know, if we're going to do this schedule that we, we try to, if, 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 if we can um, cancel that meeting, those meetings that conflict at the time and, and you know, we can get away with pushing things um, until the following meeting, that we try to do that. Um, but you know, in, in the, in the situations where that doesn't work, then you go ahead and hold the meeting. And I, I obviously can't be here. Our finance committee is meeting and obviously once we get that plan commissioner uh, member, they won't be able to be here. But uh, at least when the chair is making up the agenda, um, can try to make a determination on whether or not that meeting is necessary or can wait, um, would be my um, preference or suggestion. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder Furman. Yeah, we currently don't have a plan commission member. Hopefully we get one soon, but we'll probably, won't be an issue for one ten unless we get somebody in the next month or two. But yeah, with regards to the rest of the meetings that we have conflicts, I think we'll, we'll do our best to either, you know, eliminate those if we can, or um, make the, make the agendas lighter possibly. Uh, if that's, you know, if that's appropriate. Um, but thank you. Uh, any additional comments? Tom, I think we have to submit this before our next meeting. Is that correct? Let me read it. You remember?
I, I don't recall. I, I do see that this has to be voted on.
Yeah, that's why I was bringing it up. Um, just, um, I guess if there's a motion to approve um, this, knowing that some of the dates may shift a little bit, um, I would entertain that.
Oh.
Thank you, Randy. Is there a second?
I guess.
Uh, thank you, Alder Furman. Um, any discussion, any further discussion? All right, all those in favor of approving our proposed uh, uh, twenty twenty-two schedule, please unmute yourselves and say aye.
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 Opposed, no. Chair believes it's unanimous. If you'd like to register a no vote, please raise your hand. Seeing no hands raised, that will go down as unanimous. Thank you all. That is also all we have for the evening. Um, a little bit shorter meeting today. Uh, we'll see you all in a couple of weeks. Thank you for your time. Or I'm sorry, I have to, uh,
Move adjournment.
Thank you. Thank you, Alder Furman. It looks like a second by Randy. All those in favor of returning the meeting for this evening, please unmute yourselves and say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. All right, we're adjourned. Thanks again, everyone.